Let's call this meeting to order. Treasurer, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa?
Here.
All of us. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District goals. Every night, every meeting, we restate our goals. Student achievement being goal number one. That's everything we do is driving towards that goal. Financial prudence. Everything we do is try to maximize every taxpayer dollar that we get so that we can maximize student achievement. And then helping us in all of those directions is community engagement. So with that, we will move on to recognition.
We do not have any recognition tonight.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I do have a few things that I want to update the board and the community on. First of all, just recently, we received word that the Senate has proposed a new bill, Senate Bill Eight. It was approved. Okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. It was approved by the Senate on Wednesday. And what Senate Bill Eight would do is it would reinstate a portion of the TPP dollars that were vetoed in the most recent state budget. So what has to happen next is that it goes to the House. The House has said that it would probably vote on it after Thanksgiving. And after the House votes on it, if it passes, it would go to the governor. And what it would mean for our district, if approved and voted and signed by the governor, is it would reinstate $767,479 of the veto TPP dollars back to Strongsville City Schools for this fiscal year, which is outstanding news. There was another portion that was vetoed that did not make it to be reinstated. So that would mean that after FY eighteen, FY nineteen, and thereafter, we would be at zero dollars, zero TPP dollars moving forward. But this is going to be something else as a school district, as a board, and a community we're going to want to watch because reinstating three-quarters of a million dollars is significant. And I do want to commend Senator Matt Dolan. He's been a champion of this work down in Columbus, especially as a newly-elected senator. And so we appreciate his work on behalf of our district. And hopefully through his efforts and the efforts of his colleagues, we'll see this approved in the coming months.
We'll have a new governor, too, next year, so that should help.
I also wanted to give an update that we are continuing to work on the School Calendar Committee. We've had two meetings already. We've had a lot of dialogue and discussion, really looking in depth of what's going to happen with the school calendar for the next two school years. We are on track to be able, be ready to present the draft calendars for the board's consideration at the December fourteenth meeting. And we do call it a calendar hearing. That's a part of the policy. That's a part of the law. You have to have a calendar hearing thirty days before the vote. So we are on track to have that hearing on the fourteenth. It would be voted upon at our January, our second January meeting, should the board so wish to do that. The last thing I wanted to share, just as my update to the community, is a thank you to the community. A week or so ago, Dan Faust sent out a survey to our community members and our parents. We plan an annual State of the Schools address. We had one just recently at the Chamber. But we asked our parents and our community members, what do you want us to talk about? What do you want to hear from us? And what is the framework or format that you'd like to best hear that message? And is it, if there's anything else you'd like to share with us, let us know. So we had nearly five hundred folks respond, give us some clear direction. And my board update tomorrow, I'll share all the survey results with the board members so you can see exactly what they're interested in. It's not only given us good topics for the state of the schools, but also in our communications to families, some, you know, information that they may like to know, whether it's through a video resource library that we could create or through our sixty-seconds communications. We'll look at that as well. And right now, we're planning on having that after the first of the year. Any questions on that report?
Nope.
All right. That concludes my report to the community. Mr. Nasa?
Thank you, Mr. Raiba. That brings us to public comment. I'm not aware of any public comments. Item eight, approval of the minutes. We have the October fifth and October nineteenth board meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
Submoved.
Thank you, George.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Any discussion of the minutes? George, could you take role?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to the Treasurer's report. George?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I have a... I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first one, which is found in Exhibit A, is the financial report for the month ending on October thirty-first. Typically, I do a presentation to go along with it. I still have the presentation, but I'm going to change it up. I'm going to change it up from what I normally do. And just, I highlighted, I'm going to provide some monthly highlights. And then the, then behind the slides, I have the typical charts. I'm not going to go over them. Just if anyone has any specific questions to them, we can go to them. And then also, if anyone's watching, this is the same charts that are found in Exhibit A. So revenue highlights for the month. Revenues totaled 3.9 million for the month. General fund interest income for October totaled $39,701, and the fiscal year-to-date, $118,849. I was able to, this month, I started doing monthly simulations based on our cash balances and current interest rates, and projecting a total of $330,000 of interest for the year. So it's something I'll continue to update each month, but as of now, that's what I'm projecting, and it could change based on the market conditions.
That's incredible, George. I mean, from where we were to where we are now, $330,000 of income? Wow. Nice work.
Thanks. During October, we also received a $51,000 tax settlement to, to the complaint that we filed at the Board of Revisions for prior tax shares for increased valuation on the property. And then through October, revenues totaled 31,000, 31,115,000. And we're projecting to receive an additional 39 million in revenue from November to June for a total projected revenue of about 7.8 million, which is about 189,000 above the forecast, and mostly is contributed to the, to the interest that we're projected to gain. General fund expenditures. General fund expenditures totaled 22 million, and we have outstanding encumbrances of 3.8 million for the year. This total of 25.9 million reflects about 35.24 percent of the district's total appropriation of 73.6 million. Spending benchmark that we use is four out of twelve months or eight out of twenty-four pay periods, equates to 33 percent. We're slightly above that benchmark, but that's typical for this time of year. As last year, we were at 35.26 percent. So it's roughly the same to where we were last year. Salaries averaged 1.7 million for the month of October, which is the same as September, and same as the benefit levels for October. They averaged 1.3 million, similar to September. Our, our cash balance at the end of the month was 34 million. Our unencumbered cash balance was 30 million. And within our twenty, district's 2020 plan, the district established a cash reserve of having sixty days of cash operating on hand. And at that point, or at this point in time, it's 11 million. So we're way, we're, we're above that benchmark. And then a few other highlights that I'm proud of is, one is our bond rating update. Last month, we went to, Mr. Raiba and myself, or Mr. Raiba and myself and Mr. Nasa went to Chicago to be rated in front of Moody's for, for debt refunding that we're doing as part of that, we're issuing debts, we need to be rating, or rated. And as part of our credit rating, we've been increased from an AA3 to an AA2. And then as stated in the report, as the, one of our credit strengths for the upgrade was our fund balance and liquidity have been improved to healthy levels. The district has come a long way from 2011 when our ending cash fiscal year general fund balance was 221,000. Compared to last year, it's 24.2 million. So that short period of time where everything that has been done, we were able to grow our cash balance to almost nothing, to 24 million. And then also, as mentioned, the debt refunding. On, on Tuesday, we'll be closing the debt refunding. We're refunding about 10.3 million of the $81 million bond issue that was issued in 2013 for the middle school renovation of the high school. We also contributed 1.4 million of excess cash from the bond and retirement fund, which resulted from premium proceeds from the original issue. But overall, we're saving $700,000 in, in interest that we would otherwise pay. And then also, we reduced our debt liability by 2.5 million, all of which is a direct savings to the taxpayers. As it's less tax, we need to collect, pay off our debt.
Yep. One thing to note, just, you know, when we originally went out with the, with the bond issue, we, we said that, you know, money goes where it's welcomed and stays where it's treated well. I just want everyone to know that this board and George and the administration, we're continuing, we know we got the $81 million in the bond issue, and we continue to look after it like it's our own. That refunding, literally, it was like refunding your, your home mortgage, lowering your interest rate. So it saved you principal, what you're going to pay out, interest, what you're going to pay out. That was $723,000. While we were on that trip, we were with Bond Council and George's knowledge and, you know, we were going through exactly how we do things, and we came across a way to do it better. And because of that, we were able to save another 1.7 million dollars in the long run of, of principal payments. So on that trip, it ended up, and it was all, you know, some of us went on the trip, some of us didn't, but we were all in unison, we all talked about what we were going to do. And it was, it was a group effort, and we just, I just want to say that, you know, we really, we hit a home run there with that 2.5 million dollars, and we did it because we're going to continue to treat the taxpayers' money like it's our own and do the very best that we can. And a lot of it has to do with, with George down there, and his, his technical knowledge is just incredible, so.
Mr. Nasa? Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks to you, to Cameron, and to George for your work on this. But what's more important for the people in Strongsville to understand is that all the while that, that the folks, Robbie and George, have been able to do this, we've been increasing the offerings to our kids. They have more advanced placement courses, they have more opportunities. Our athletic facilities are second to nobodies now. Our folks, our teachers, everybody is, is doing better. And so even while the financial picture has improved, so has the educational picture all the way around, arts, athletics, and academics.
George, I have a question.
Sure.
If you could. We were telling people, as they were voting for the bond, that it was $16 per $100,000 in home value per year. Can you give us an estimate of what that changed? What the homeowner will see? Because, and I don't know if it's pennies, I don't know if it's a dollar, the only reason why I ask that question is, in relative terms, we saved ourselves 2.5 million dollars. That's a lot of money. But to the individual homeowner, how does that equate? So if you could maybe just send us an email or maybe even make an update at the next board meeting, and just tell us, because again, that's how we went to the community. We told them that it wasn't $16 per 100,000 a month, but per year.
I think what it, one of the things we talked about was, was that it would, it would actually, you know, obviously, the payments are going to stay the same. However, the debt's going to end sooner. So almost a half a year to three-quarters of a year, I think we came up with, that the, that I believe is the way it would work, the debt service would end sooner.
The, the debt service would stay the same. It'll, in the years 20 to, was it 20, 2024 to 2029, the debt payments are going to decrease.
Okay.
So it'll be less funds that we would need to collect over the long term to pay off the total debt.
Okay.
So we could, essentially, as this goes on, we could lower the millage rate. When, when the time is right, that'll be less money that'll be, need to be collected.
Ultimately, a homeowner in Strongsville, in time, will be paying less of a payment because of the actions that you guys took by going to Chicago, getting a better rating. So their payments, what they have to pay into these buildings is going to be less.
Correct.
By good stewardship of their own tax dollars.
And this is something that we're looking, we, although we did a portion of it now, this is something we continue to, we're going to continue to monitor to see if we can section the debt out over time as well to continue to save additional dollars on, on interest.
Perfect.
But a portion of, you know, part of it was our, a portion of the, why we got the debt, our debt rating upgraded, a portion of it was directly related to the action of the administration and the board and George and how we're doing things. A portion of it had to do with the fact that we're in Strongsville, and this is a great town, and there's a lot of opportunities. And guys like Councilman Duner, who's sitting out there in the audience today, there, because of their actions, making this a, a great city to live in, a great, safe city to live in, that was a balance of, of one of the reasons why we were able to, to get the bond rating basis. So we had to present a lot about Strongsville and a lot about us. And the, the two of them were just good. It was a great story, so.
So if there's no further questions on the presentation, that concludes the presentation. So then moving on to item B, new funds for fiscal year eighteen. Be a result upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the following new funds for fiscal year eighteen be approved, oh nineteen ninety-nine fifty-eight, the Staples Intel Technology Grant. As you, as, as you're aware, that we received a $10,000 grant through Staples from Intel on technology initiatives through the district. And then also, a 29905 student activity account at the high school for a care club. And their purpose and goals can be found on Exhibit B, which leads into C, to approve this student activity program budget and purpose and goals for fiscal year eighteen be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the following student activity program budget and purpose and goals be approved for the Strongsville High School Care Club in the amount of 3,500. Item D, student activity program budget revision for fiscal year eighteen be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the following student activity budget program revision for fiscal year eighteen be approved, the Strongsville High School Dance Team, Fund 39930, increasing their budget from 2,000 to 2,555 to 7,006. They're expecting additional resources from more fundraisers that they're going to do this year, and the budget revision can be found in Exhibit C. Then the last item, E, fiscal year eighteen amended appropriation, amended permanent appropriations, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the amended permanent appropriations for fiscal year eighteen be approved, and explanations can be found in Exhibit D. So if there's no questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Nice work. Back to the Superintendent's report?
I do have a few timely information to share with the board and the community. First of all, as we enter Thanksgiving and the holiday season next week, just a reminder that you can get your Strongsville gear as holiday gifts. The, the Ville t-shirt, which is up there, and many of us have, is still available at where I'm from, from, in South Park Mall. And that will be available through December. And as a reminder, all proceeds from those sales go back to the Strongsville Education Foundation, which are funding field trips for our students in the district. And we appreciate both of their efforts on our part. Also, earlier, was it last week, Dan? Last week, I believe, we kicked off the Mustangs Team Shop. The link went out through our Mustang Moments. And there's a lot of great gear that's up there, from t-shirts, the long-sleeved t-shirts, to hoodies and sweatshirts, from a couple different logos that we use as a district. And you can place your orders at mustangs team shop dot item order dot com. And if you'd like those items prior to the holiday season, please get your order in by Tuesday, November 21st. We also, coming up, we have winter sports starting already. So in the month of November, girls' basketball will have a home game versus Medina on Wednesday, the 29th, at 7:30, as well as swimming, diving will kick off their season at 6:30 PM versus North Royalton at the Rec Center. And just as an update, we do, Mr. Tomino and Mr. Smithberger and their leadership at the high school has done a tremendous amount of work to develop our career tech program. And a part of that is to have a career tech advising component where folks from the business community come in and share their expertise and feedback on the programs we have at the high school. So that's an invitation event, but just to share that, that we'll have that Wednesday, the 29th, at 6:00 PM, and look forward to collaborating between the district and our local business partners. And that concludes my timely information, unless there's any questions.
No. Business Services?
Mr. Rechner?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items for you tonight. The first item is transportation for non-public students. These are students who are not attending our school or schools that we provide transportation to, and it's been deemed impractical to transport them on our current buses. So they are there for payment in lieu of, for you. Also, there's a few gifts that have been donated to the, the district. The Intel Corporation and Staples donated $10,000 to the district as a result of a contest entered by the associates of the Strongsville Staples Store. The gift will support the expansion of elementary maker spaces as well as innovative practices district-wide. Also, the Strongsville Giant Eagle Market District donated 225 plastic bags for children to use while collecting treats at the Strongsville City Schools greet and treat event. Mr. James Carbone donated two Christmas trees, one case of book covers, one box of winter clothing, one box of Valentine, Valentine cards, three boxes of miscellaneous school supplies to Surar Elementary School. Mr. Leonard Lane donated a $50, $50 Staples gift card for students at Surar Elementary School. Ms. Marissa Walters donated miscellaneous school supplies valued at approximately $100 to Surar Elementary School. The Kuhar family donated two sets of four tickets to Boo at the Zoo valued at $92 to Surar Elementary School. The Brexville Heinen's Grocery Store donated a fruit basket to the staff and 12 five-star dinner board games to the students of Surar Elementary School at a combined estimated value of $150. And finally, the Rotary Club of Strongsville made their annual donation of dictionaries to all district third-grade students. And that completes the, the gifts for the district.
I do have one question. How's that new salt truck?
Wonderful. I'll go pick up the plates tomorrow.
Oh, yeah? Excellent. Just in time.
Yep. We had it once over and sent it back to the dealership. They fixed everything that we asked them to fix and got it back and gave it the second over and approved the payment, so it's ours. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Rechner.
Thank you.
With the curriculum report, we have a Director of Curriculum, Aaron Green.
Good evening. Two items tonight, both student-teacher placements. Item one is a student-teacher placement from, a student from Baldwin Wallace University. And the second is a counseling practicum to be assigned to a counselor from, student from Kent State University pursuing her master's practicum. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
We do not have any items under Student Services this evening, so next we have Human Resource Report from Jenny.
Good evening. I have the following items for your consideration under Human Resources. Under E1, I have the resignation of non-certificated leadership and the resignation of a certificated supplemental contract. Under E2, I have the appointment of a certificated staff member, appointments for non-certificated staff members, appointments for certificated substitutes, and appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts played upon completion, and one appointment for a certificated supplemental contract. Under E3, I have a change in a full-time equivalent of a certificated staff member. Under E4, we have our changes in hours for non-certificated staff members. Under E5, several changes in status of non-certificated staff members. Under E6, one salary upgrade of a certificated staff member. Under E7, our stipends for our weight room supervisors for spring and winter, and stipends from our curriculum department to go toward AmesWeb Plus platform training. So we have building liaisons for our AmesWeb Plus, and that is our certificated teachers and certificated school psychologists. Under E8, we have three continuing contract recommendations for non-certificated staff. Under E9, one unpaid medical leave of a non-certificated staff. Under E10, several medical leaves for certificated staff and medical leaves for non-certificated staff members. And under E11, we have our volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Nope. Okay. Thank you, Nasa.
Thank you, Jenny. We do not have any technology updates this month, so that concludes my Superintendent's report.
Richard, do you want to give us the Polaris report?
It'll be a quick report. In five minutes, the Polaris Open House at Polaris will be over, so if you still want to hurry, you might get there, but you'll have to speed. But hopefully, those who are interested did get out to the open house and found it valuable. Hopefully, if you wanted your Thanksgiving Day pies, you put in your order last Friday because they'll be picked up next week. And they, Polaris is having a Thanksgiving food drive, so if you do have reason to visit Polaris, you can donate some food for the needy for Thanksgiving. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Legislation?
Cameron already commented on the thing I needed to comment on, which is the good news about SB eight. There is some question about how it will be, will be received in the House. So I suggest an email or a phone call, or if you happen to see Representative Tom Patton in the neighborhood, you can let him know how important this is to us. You know, it, $800,000 is nothing to sneeze at, so it would be great to our bottom line. And as we've said numerous times before, we are already sending more taxes down to Columbus than we get back, so I think it's reasonable that this $800,000 comes back to Strongsville and continues the financial prudence that we've been doing all along. So email, phone call, or if you see him about town, let him know we need his support. And that completes my report.
Thank you. I ran, I was talking with Matt Dolan on Monday, and he was, he, we were downtown at an event, and he came running over. He was extremely excited. He worked very hard to get that money for us, and he was concerned about the House. So if there's, it'd be a great time to send a letter, like Richard said, but I just wanted to thank Matt Dolan, again, from Strongsville City Schools for his efforts. So it's, it's nice to have someone working.
Mr. Nasa, I'll have Mr. Faust, if you can, in Mustang Moments for tomorrow, put a similar update as we had, and we can put an address or an email so they can contact, easy to contact Senator, or Representative Patton.
Maybe put a little thank you in there.
Hmm.
Or Mr. Dolan. Okay. That brings us to the Board Liaison Report. City Council, Jane?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nasa. City Council had a meeting, and they started with the recognition for the Youth Hockey League of Strongsville, and they raised money for cancer research. It was October Saves Goalie Challenge, so some very impressive use. The whole hockey team was there. It was really exciting to see them there. And City Council also approved a zoning change for a parcel on Pearl Road, so there will be a new business going in on a vacant corner of Pearl. And Santa is coming to town Sunday, November 19th, at the lighting at the square, so I hope everyone's able to come. And it's always a great time. There's usually fireworks provided by our generous businesses in our community, barring weather. So hopefully, that doesn't come off badly. And I don't know, it looks like it's going to be cold. And the Historical Society will also be open, so hopefully, you'll come out and see both the village and the square. That and City Council.
Student achievement, Jane?
Oh, student achievement. Here we go. I had the privilege of spending half a day at Kinsner Elementary School in the third grade. So Mrs. Kaminsky, Mrs. Wise, and Mrs. Williams shared with me their language arts lessons. The students were grouped together for differentiated instruction. And this slide here is, they, the students had to read a section of a story and then pick out the characters and the setting and the events with the guidance of their teacher. So that was, they were very responsive to that. Another lesson centered on identifying cause and effect. This student here is generating sentences using pre-made clips, and they have to make sure to recognize using capitals and periods. And then afterwards, they take a picture of all the sentences, and then they send it to the teacher. So this way, the teacher doesn't have to be hands-on with everyone, and the students do get very individualized instruction. It was very impressive how they could manage all the different needs for the schools, the children in their classroom. The last slide was the highlight of Friday. It's Flashlight Friday, and you can't see anything, but they have all the lights off, and each student is given an individualized flashlight, and they are able to read by the flashlight. And they were all so excited to do this. But the, the objective of- But the, the objective of the curriculum is really to enhance reading because by having strong readers, that corresponds to having strong writing skills. So they did ask that if parents to aid with this would continue to read at home with their children on a regular basis, to really encourage that love of reading and to make them stronger readers to thereby make them stronger writers, which has been a focus of our whole curriculum this year for improving English language arts. And that's my student achievement.
Nice, thank you. George, I believe you attended the PTA council meeting today?
I was at the president's meeting today. We were, Strongsville Rotary was making a pitch regarding the duck race and the, the Kids Fest that we have on the first Saturday of every June. But looking at PTA calendar, just to remind everybody that November 21st is the DARE Ice Skating Event at OBM. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. $3 admission, $3 skate rental. November 30th, Don't Be a Victim. It's a special clinic at the Strongsville Rec Center. It's from 6:30 to 8:30. And December 4th, we have a Strongsville Middle School fundraiser at Chipotle. And then you can get the flyer from PTA right on their website, which is on the school website.
Thank you. We did not have a, actually, I think that's a, Strong's Education Foundation, do we have?
Yeah, we, we did have a meeting a, a week or so ago. And they're continuing to work on, you know, they're, what they did is they approved, I'm going to go back and remember.
The grants.
They approved a handful of teacher education grants for a couple, well, middle school teacher and an elementary teacher. They're also planning on their, their annual fundraiser to read their annual appeal and planning a special event to reach out to supporters of the foundation. And they're working on some ideas and plans there, and hopefully they'll have that wrapped up by next month's meeting.
Excellent. We did not have a finance committee meeting. I don't think we had a policy committee meeting.
No, yeah.
And there was a facilities committee meeting last night.
Yes, we did. Right now, the focus for the group is properties. We're going to go back and review all the properties within the district's ownership and review membership numbers and names. Our next meeting is in January. It is an open meeting to the public, so we recommend and hope that as many people that would like to come and talk about the brick and mortar of these, of the school district that's taxpayer-owned, they'd come and visit us.
That brings us, as, while we're on committees, next year, we do have an additional Polaris spot. We have two spots. We have a, a three-year spot and a one-year spot, I believe. And if anyone's on the board interested or can, feels they can contribute, get that over to Cameron and take a look at that, so. That brings us to the consent calendar. All items with an asterisk are adopted in a single vote. I know, we don't have any adjustments to the calendar on here. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion on any of the items? George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nason?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. That brings us to Board of Education and other. I do have another. I just, I, I attended the, the trafficking seminar that we had last, last night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday night. Richard was there.
I was there.
Jane was there. Yep. It was, it was, it was moving and there was a discussion from Teresa Flores, who had actually been a victim of trafficking. And it was quite moving and quite scary and it was well worth the two and a half, three hours that we were there with all the different speakers and everything. And we talked a little bit about it and I know that several of the parents in the discussion and I think it's something we need to be concerned with in the district and we also have to maybe up our game. I think we have to make it more of an awareness, more of a, more training, more whatever we have to do. But I think I'd, I'd like Cameron, if you could, consider that. I don't think, I think everyone's probably in agreement.
Yeah, they were videotaping it. I'm not sure for what purpose, like, do we have access to that?
We do. The, the city recorded it and I spoke to the gentleman that did that and he shared that we could have the link to promote on our own sites or through our own cable network. So I have that information and Mr. Benson and I will be talking about how we can.
Is this part of our curriculum at all or is it planned to be?
Human trafficking is not a part specifically of our curriculum. We talk in our health classes about dating violence. We talk about, you know, health and safety and through our DARE program, we talk with our, with our students. This is not something, Erin, am I correct in saying that? That is, it is a required topic. Like I said, dating violence has been in our curriculum for a handful of years now. But it is something, as we, you know, we heard some good speakers. And that was the, as we talked prior to the event in the forum is, you know, listening to speakers, seeing if they could relate to students. That's different than talking to adults. And one of our high school students who worked on the state auditors, not state auditor, I apologize, Attorney General Task Force, and also as a part of our youth commission, we spoke afterwards and she's going to work with the youth commission and then I'm going to go to one of their meetings with some other administrators and, and kind of work in a collaboration with, at the high school level with the students and administration and staff to see what's most appropriate. And then I know, as, as you know, the, those members that were there, there is a request to, you know, even consider our middle school age students and developing age-appropriate awareness for them. So Mr. Ellis from the Rotary and Mr. McEntee, who took the lead in this, have already reached out. They're proposing dates, I think, in, end of November, early December to have a follow-up of what are the next steps from a community perspective. And then we will definitely look at how can we up our game in terms of getting this information out in a sensitive and an age-appropriate way for our students.
Okay. Teresa from the rape crisis group was especially impactful.
Yes, she was.
So I think she'd be someone, if we could tone her down for the students, I think, get it to the appropriate level. I think it'd be, Jane, you were going to say something?
No, 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 that's right. It was very moving. It's just hard to believe that we're dealing with this situation in our country.
Correct.
Does anybody have any other, others?
I have another. Hopefully more pleasant subject than that. I had the opportunity to attend a whole bunch of Veterans Day activities last week. I know our schools had them on Thursday and Friday. I think every school except the high school had, had an event. And they were very nice and very good and it was great to see the elementary school kids be so enthusiastic. I think Ms. Grozine had all of her kids trained in close-order drill, which was kind of interesting to see. But it was very nice and as a veteran, I know all the veterans there, we really appreciated it and salute all the teachers and the, and the musical performances that were excellent. That middle school orchestra is incredible. And all the kids that did all the, all the work to sing and make the signs and everything else, so thank you very much.
That's excellent. Any other? Okay, that brings us to another, that brings us to meeting notices. We have only one meeting in December. That'll be December 14th, 7 o'clock, right here in the admin building. We do have need for executive session tonight. Do we have a motion?
For the reasons to consider the dismissal of a public employee to prepare for and to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
I do have a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
We will enter an executive session at 7:45. We do, we possibly do have.
We will.
We will. We will have business afterwards, so we will resume public session at some point when we're done. That will go in. We'll resume session at 8:25. George? That brings us to item 19, resolution to terminate any and all employee contracts of Karen L. Rich effective immediately pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 3319.081. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any further discussion? George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nason?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Brings us to adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, George, for your first. Thank you, Duke, for your second. Any discussion? George, take all.
Mr. Grozine?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nason?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:26.[1767.28]